Oh, I'm, we are now recording, so trustee Smith Folds.
Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the academic committee. It's May 4th, 2021. And let's get started. As authorized by the Governor's Emergency Executive Order issued on March 17th, 2020, the West County Unified School District will conduct the board academic committee meetings via video conference or teleconference until further notice. This meeting will be streamed via Zoom. Participating in the board committee, this meeting will provide public comment opportunities through the Zoom app or by telephone. To indicate your desire to speak on an agenda item, raise your hand by clicking the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. In order to be recognized to speak, you must log in with your first and last name, and your hand must be raised before public comment begins. For each item, we're okay with that. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to the items presented in public comment. All right, Mr. Aurelio, will you please do roll call?
Yes, Chair Trustee Smith Folds.
Good afternoon, everyone. Present.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi.
Good afternoon, present.
And Superintendent Dr. Hurst will take role with you, too.
I am present.
Excellent.
Perfect. All right, so trustee Gonzalez Hoi, will you do the land acknowledgement for us, please?
Absolutely. We recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichenia Muehka Karken Aloney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of this land we currently occupy.
Perfect. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi, any changes on the agenda that you see?
I don't have any changes, trustee Smith Folds, so I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Great. I second it. Seeing no one who has a problem with it, it passes. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Aurelio?
All right, this will be the time, if you want to raise your hand virtually for any public comment not on the agenda. At the moment, I'm not seeing any hands, so it looks like no public comment.
All right, if anyone pops up, just let us know. And we are moving on to discussion item A, new school programs. We have the Visual and Performing Arts, VAPA. We have the academics and Afrocentric School. We are moving a little fast because we have a lot to cover. We want to make sure we give everyone time to attend the reclassification ceremony this evening. So that's why we're going at a faster pace than normal. But we are going to give everything as due diligence, and we can always come back to it if needed. All right, Mr. Aurelio, you guys are up.
So here we go. We are going to just do a quick update on some new program offerings. And then I do have Director Will McGee to present on the Afrocentric School specifically. So just a reminder of some of the specialized program offerings our district has. And this is a slide that was actually taken from a slide we presented earlier this year to the board back, I want to say, in January. Just a reminder that we have an IB program, the International Baccalaureate, that is at Pinole Valley High. I do want to mention that that is expanding to West County Mandarin as well. And you'll notice West County Mandarin is on here as a dual-language immersion program. They're in a multiple transition. We're actually physically moving them to the Pinole Middle School campus with a long-term plan of expanding International Baccalaureate at both West County Mandarin and Pinole Middle School, so you would have a true IB track in that area, all the way into Pinole Valley High School. We, just a reminder, we do have our two-way dual-language immersion at Downers Stewart, Washington. Missing on this slide is our developmental dual-language programs, and those are at numerous elementary schools throughout. But this was just highlighting specifically the two-way. There are multiple academies, career technical ed, and of course, we have alternative programs in schools. So I think this was asked at the fall, at the board meeting back in January. So I wanted to make sure we highlighted for our audience and also for potential enrollment reasons, our programs, our college and career pathways that we do currently have in existence at each of our comprehensive schools, including Greenwood, our alternative high school. And those are listed here. And you can see we have a pretty rich offering of programming that's available to our students throughout the district. Education is one that will be continued to work on shows fall 2021 in education pathway. And I know that one is true to Mr. Gonzalez Hoi's heart. So this is a slide I really wanted to show you and get to. So back in January, we made some recommendations around programming that would be new or potentially new starting the fall. And so I wanted to provide a quick update regarding those programs. So the Academy of Visual and Performing Arts, we were looking at an add-on program that would be housed at one of our high schools. At this point, we're going to postpone that. We're not trying to do a launch in 2122 of this programming. We felt that we need to take a few steps back to do this well and truly engage all our stakeholders, including especially our labor units and our current arts and music programming teachers. So we're taking a pause on that. We're not going to be starting any programming that's new for 2122. Similarly, the Trades Pathway, which was a secondary one, that had, has a target for 2223 school year. We're still looking to do that. So next year would be the planning year for that with the CTE pathways. Outdoor school is something that, especially during our pandemic and COVID, there was a lot of interest in exploring what we can do with our physical spaces and trying to expand on possibilities for more outdoor space. There's been a small sort of committee cohort that's been meeting throughout the year, really exploring options, looking at examples of schools. But right now, it's really just in the exploration phase. We're not, we don't have plans for any schools particularly tied to an outdoor school. You're going to hear a little more details from Doc, from Will McGee around the Afrocentric Schools. I'm not going to sort of spend too much time here, but we are fully exploring that option. And you're going to hear just, you're going to hear more about that in just a minute. We did, the board did approve Crespi Grade Six Expansion, so it is a part, sort of a pilot year, but we are growing the sixth grade. And of course, there is also a naming committee for that campus as well. So big changes for that campus coming soon, ideally by the 2122 school year. They are currently enrolling sixth graders for next year, so especially the May Valley, which is where that school is located, families who are currently slotted to go to those elementary schools have an additional option for their sixth graders if they want the true, the true middle school sixth grade experience as well. And then I mentioned above in the last slide that Mandarin is physically moving to Pinole Middle School, and that was board approved as well. So I'm going to exit this slide and stop my share, and I'm going to turn it over. Mr. McGee, are you ready and available? There he is. Mr. McGee, do you want me to pull up the slide deck, or do you want to control the slide deck?
I can control it if I'm allowed to share.
Yeah, let me make sure you can.
Okay, it looks like I'm able to.
And you said we needed to promote.
Yeah, we promote Linda Delgado for us, and then I'm looking for other members of the planning committee, planning team. I don't see any on here yet, so.
Okay, so I promoted Linda. Hello, Ms. Delgado. Hello, Dr. Delgado.
Thank you.
And so you should be able to share your screen now.
Yes, I got it. And so we won't take too long on our presentation. Let's see.
And we are taking these as one item. That's why we're kind of moving between slide decks. The Afrocentric School and New School Programs as one item. And then we're going to set, we'll pause for questions and that whole process, and then we'll move over to virtual school as a second item.
Okay, so then we won't take too, too long then. I heard trustee Smith Folds mention the reclassifications ceremony. And so we'll try and go through our presentation to entertain questions and board comment as well. So, good evening, honorable board members, superintendent Dr. Hurst, staff and community. My name is William McGee. I'm the director of the Office of African American Student Achievement. Grateful to be here. This has been a project that we have officially started working on as a school district this school year. But this has been in the works in the past. We've had parents and teachers and staff who've discussed an Afrocentric school. And so there has been some unofficial, and when I say unofficial, just meaning that it hasn't been taken on by the school district. There have been a lot of unofficial planning, as well as there's been some community meetings around an Afrocentric or an Afrocentric type of school. And so for our school district, this is the development team. And so we have had a couple of meetings with our families and community. There was supposed to be a meeting last week, but I was overzealous and overcommitted. And so we weren't able to have that meeting. And then we also have worked with Dr. Linda Delgado from EdMetrix. And the reason why we had sought her out was because she has expertise in schools, in charter schools, and what it takes to have a school open from the ground up. And so what we did was we engaged with the contract with EdMetrix from, I think about March until June 30th of this school year, and then we'll evaluate it and see if we'll continue with them. And EdMetrix has been great because they've done more than what they've contracted to do, to do in regard of the hours. So just quick background, as I stated, we've discussed the concept of an Afrocentric school in our district for years. We have also gotten the history. There was a family that was very prominent in our school district years ago. And I won't pull Ms. Preston on. I'll clown her a little bit, because if I pull her on, she'll talk to us a long time about the history. But she has been great, along with some of our parents and other staff members, just talking about the history and what we did do in the past around black students and a black school on Saturday. We did discuss an independent charter school, a district affiliated charter school, and then a district school. And we had landed on either a district affiliated or district school. And then based on what we discussed, it would be a district school outright. And so this is where we do need to get board direction, as well as we'll have to talk with Dr. Hurst as he's now in town with us and get his thoughts on what we can do. And so one of the attachments is a needs analysis that EdMetrix put together for us. And so again, that should be available for the community and the board to click on. So real quick, and then I'll turn this over to Ms. Delgado. So some of the things that we did was we did have a community meeting. There were a lot of people there. We had about 40, 40 people there, inclusive of our APACs and our ASAT, as well as community people who are just interested in our school district. And we did a presentation, discussed the history. And so what we did was also broke into breakout rooms, and they listed their comments here about what they would like to see in the, the school. And then I'll turn it over to Dr. Delgado, and she'll talk to us about the next steps on this recent progress slide.
Okay. Hi there. Nice to meet you all. Welcome, Board Leader Superintendent Dr. Hurst. I'm swinging briefly through the history of the project. If I could get the presenter to click on the first link, please, under number one, all comments here. Who has, there we go. Yeah.
And you may just want to start talking. It looks like my internet might be overloaded. So you may just want to start talking while it's loading.
Got it. Okay, so the comments were, the 40 or so community members, some members from ASAT, some teachers, some former employees of the district, such as myself, got together and did a brainstorming of everything that they would like to see in the school. And all of the comments are here. You'll see that there are four different rooms. And there were four facilitators, and the rules of this particular brainstorm were, let's take everything that anybody says and jot it down. So going back to the presentation, if you ever want to refer to all of the comments, they're here. And they're very, I think, interesting and enlightened. So returning to the presentation, please. I'm going to give you a run for your money tonight, Mr. McGee. Okay, back to the slide with, I think it's the next slide. Would you pull up a presentation for me, Doug? There we go. Go to, well, just show you number three, the school plan outline. The thing that we're using to plan the school is basically the structure that you use when you're planning a charter school. We're calling the school plan outline because that's what it is. It is from the California Department of Ed. It's been in use for about 20 years. It's comprehensive and useful in that it makes it so there's nothing that this team is going to overlook in the planning of the school. So I think we will not switch over to the school plan outline just now, but it's there for your reference if you'd like to look at it. And let's do go to number four. This is a combination of the community's comments, the school plan outline, which are all of the elements that you need in a school. And in the final column, you'll see suggested verbiage for the planning of the school that combines the parent comments, the school plan outline, and results in what we're proposing for language. And although the, the team decided not to do a charter school, again, we, we felt that the outline and the process of some of the kind of building of a charter school would be useful in this effort. So again, far left-hand column is the school plan outline. Second column from the left are the comments from the community. The third column are, is the way that we chose to code each of the comments. That is, each has a room number and a comment number. We did that because we wanted to ensure that no comments were lost and that nothing slipped through the cracks. The fourth column over is where we are adding research. And if you scroll down in this document, I think it's around page four, you'll see that some research has been added. It's color-coded so that it connects to the community comments on the left. There we go. This is exactly what I'm talking about. Take, for example, the second comment down, "Students should have an understanding about the experience across the diaspora." That was one of the community comments. Within the research, we found that researchers are certainly talking about that and how important that is in the education of an African American child. So we are slowly filling in the research. And Mr. McGee, if you'd scroll back up to the top, I'll show you an example of some of the recommended language that we have for answering the prompts on the school outline, the planning outline. Up a little bit further, go back all the way up to the top. There we go. So I'm swinging to the far left, you'll see letter B, target school population, whom the school is attempting to educate. And then on the far right-hand column, "The school will educate WCCUSD students whose families choose a rigorous college prep education through the African American lens." And once again, these are basically rewording the comments from the community. Okay, back to the presentation, please. And you'll see at the bottom of the slide that we are working from, I think it's number four, perhaps five. What slide number is that one? We had to go out of presentation. You see that we have a file full of research. Quite a few of the people in the development team are keen on adding to the research. So as we go, we're, we are just building out the file of useful things. Okay, so next slide, please. Recent, yeah, good. So this is referring once again to the elements of the school planning outline. Each of these are the things that a community must answer in order to plan a school. On this slide, you'll see that everything that is in green is, has been drafted. And everything that is in blue has, I would say, is about 30 to 50% complete. Everything that is in black has yet to be drafted, but we, yeah, I'm not, not super concerned about any of those. You'll see that you have a detailed project plan that you can look at if you click that link. And the preliminary average yearly budget, actually, our budget plan for the first year assumes two classes of Kinder and two classes of sixth grade. Those things are flexible depending upon district and community desires, but that has been planned out as such so far. Enrollment rollout, I believe, is shown on the next slide. Mr. McGee, if you'll forward us. And there you have the enrollment rollout. As you see, it's broken down by year along the far left-hand column. This is assuming two classes of Kinder, 20 students each, two classes of sixth grade, 25 students each. In the budget, we have formulas so that if we change any of those class size assumptions, the budgeting will follow suit. But this gives us an entirely enrolled school by the year 2027. And the figures along the very bottom of the table are what the grade, what the district has enrolled as of 2019, 2020. So for example, to check and make sure that we are being logical and reasonable, we checked how many African American students are enrolled in kindergarten. The answer is 323, in first grade, 305, et cetera. So I believe that's it for me. Mr. McGee, if you would like to take the next slide, and I'm here to answer any questions and support.
Thank you, Ms. Delgado. So that was just a little bit of what the work that we've done and what the community and planning team had discussed. So then if you look at this slide, we wanted to give the committee a little bit more information just on the budget. So I really appreciate Regina Weber from the State and Federal Department, or not State and Federal, excuse me, the Budget Department. I sent her a quick email asking her about revenue, and she responded back immediately. So I appreciate that. So as Dr. Delgado mentioned, one of the things, the cost for the first year could potentially be around $600,000 when you're looking at one administrator, one possibly office staff person. You're looking at two teachers at the Kinder level, and then two teachers either at the sixth grade level or the fourth grade level. That was the discussion that the committee had engaged in. And then a prep teacher and the materials and supplies. And so I estimated at the higher level, there are some things that could potentially happen because the school will more than likely need to be co-located for the first couple of years because of enrollment. So you may end up sharing an office staff or whatever the case may be. But if we could fully enroll the school at 90 children, and the approximate ADA per child is $10,000, and assuming that they attend regularly, then the revenue could potentially be $900,000 for that first year. And so it will be $300,000 in the plus, if my math is correct. So just wanting to give you all just like a quick thought, and again, these are approximate numbers. So of course, it would have to be, what's the word I'm looking for, a little bit more with the actuals so we can know that for sure. Let me see. So then, just as we're wrapping up items to consider, what the goals of an Afrocentric school would be, the timeline. We would ideally like to have a founding principal that would be engaged in this work to really be able to work with the community and then work with what the school would be based on that. Teachers being in the mix, and then also the building of the school with the elements needed. Other items to consider are the cost and co-location of the school, and then what is the district really engaging in at this time? So the idea would be that we would get feedback from you all as an academic subcommittee. Again, work with Dr. Hurst and the Educational Services Team. Then we would take this back to the planning committee, and I believe there were about 10 members on the planning committee. The idea was to have them present with us tonight, but again, because I did not plan well, I was unable to get that in here. Then after we take this back to the planning committee, then we would take this back to the whole community at large, and then back again to the planning committee, and then back to the district staff to do the work. So I believe that will end our presentation. And then as Mr. Aurelio stated, I don't know if we're doing questions, thoughts, and comments now, or if this will be, since you said it was as a package. So I'll go on mute and wait to see what's next.
Thank you, Mr. McGee and Dr. Delgado. Trustee Smith Folds, do you want to give us process?
Sure. So thank you, Mr. McGee. Thank you, Dr. Delgado. Thank you for the presentation. So what we're going to do is we're going to kind of flip it a little bit, because we want to make sure we get public comment in. So if you have, usually we go board questions, public comment, and then board discussion. This time, we're going to go public comment. So if you have any public comment, go ahead and raise your hand. And then we're going to go to questions and comments, because trustee Gonzalez Hoi and I like to mix the questions and the comments together. So if you have any public comment, and I saw Ms. Shields' hand up, but then I saw it taken down. So Ms. Shields, I want to give you time to put your, oh, it is back up. There it is. All right, great. So if you have public comment, go ahead. And Mr. Aurelio, I think we're ready.
All right, so I'm going to go with Ms. Shields first. So let's, she'll do there. I think you can unmute now.
If there are speakers, I'll let them speak first, and then I'll wait. Is there anybody else waiting to speak?
No, right, it's just you and Zalan are up right now. So go ahead.
Okay. I guess I'm really concerned because as, as my experience of the African American Afrocentric School effort was a meeting that we have been undertaking for almost a year. And Mr. McGee joined our meeting a month or two ago, and we were talking about organizing a school. And we were talking about, you know, what format it would be. And then apparently there have been some more meetings, and I wasn't included in on those meetings. And, and I'm just really concerned that we are trying to build an Afrocentric school, and we don't even have an Afrocentric coordinator, somebody putting it together. Why do we have a white person putting together our Afrocentric school? What is Ms. Delgado's qualifications? Does she have an Afrocentric background? Does she have any African studies? Does she have any sensitivity to our community? Is our community, our black people sensitive to her and feel welcome to step up to her and discuss concerns, ideas, et cetera? I don't know her, and I've never seen her do any work with ASAT or with the NAACP or any of the black folks in the community. How did she get this position? I'm really concerned about that.
Thank you, Audrey. Zalan, you're next. I think you can unmute.
Yeah, I just heard Mr. McGee mentioned that it was supposed to go, the planning committee was supposed to present tonight with this presentation, and I wanted to know why we didn't, because I'm part of that committee. And I heard a lot of new things, and did I miss something? I might have missed something. I just don't know. There's a lot of information that I haven't heard before that was presented tonight, I mean, this afternoon. So I just wanted to know, was it a meeting, because I thought our meeting was coming up this week. So why weren't we part of this presentation? I just don't, I don't know why. What's going on?
All right, I will make sure we get that answered. Let me, Scotty Smith, you're next. Scotty, can you unmute? Are you there, Scotty? There you are. Looks like you're unmuted now. You can begin. Mr. Aurelio, I think last time she had to call in from her cell phone. Let me try. I think this might be the number. Scotty, is this, try unmuting your phone now and see if that works. Is that you?
Hey, yes, we, we, we're, uh, hold on one second. One second. I, I have some serious problems with this whole focus now, at this time, on an Afrocentric school. I have problems with even the little, small amount of information that, research that has been done. No one has said anything in terms of, have you read anything, reviewed any schools that are in place? Did you do some research? Did you do some research on a specific elementary school? And I also have to concur with Audrey in terms of the leadership here. You really need someone who, if you're going to do this, which I have some concerns because you're only going to serve a small number of African-American kids when you start out in this program. And we need to focus on the masses of kids, of African-American kids. And if we are doing a piss-poor job in terms of educating the masses of African-American students and other students of color, I think we need to focus on how we would integrate any courses in terms of Afrocentrism into the regular school. If this, if this district was doing its job, our kids would be taught within the regular class setting. But to segregate them even more, when you don't have any data on any school that is operating in an effective manner, it's, it's really it's, it's bad planning. And that's one of the things that this district has been good at, bad planning over the years. And I think if you look at what you're supposed to be teaching within your courses, you're supposed to be covering not only the history of African-Americans, but you're supposed to be covering all different ethnic groups if you're teaching your class right and across the curriculum. But that's not being done. So what you do is you come up with this little game plan here to appease, I don't know who you appease him because your planning committee person just said she's not aware of all of the stuff that, that you presented here tonight. So I'm having some serious problems with this in terms of, let us first look at what is needed for the masses of black kids in this district and how we can then infuse that within the normal curriculum. But Linda, I know you have been in the charter business for a long period of time. I don't think you have any kind of background in this area of research, so I have a problem with that. And so I, I think it really needs some thought if you're going to try to do this, but I think it should be done within the regular school.
Yes, Scotty, I'm going to cut, it times up on the comment. So, thank you, Scott.
I'm finished now. I said my two cents worked.
That's comments for this item.
Thank you every mu, thank you everyone so much for your public comment. We are going to go to questions, but if anybody, anybody has the opportunity to answer to anything, that's okay. It says that the board usually doesn't answer to that, but panelists, if you want to answer to anything, please feel free. This is an open conversation, so please know that you have the ability to answer anything. Mr. Aurelio, we're doing pretty good on time, so if we have more hands that pop back up, let's see what happens. All right, so let's. Trustee Gonzalez-Hoy, do you have any questions? Or, and/or comments? Let's push them all together, trustee.
Do you want, I see Dr. Delgado's hand. Do you want to let them respond to any of the questions that we might have heard first, or do you want to jump into the trustee Gonzalez-Hoy?
Dr. Delgado, go ahead and respond if you would like, and then trustee Gonzalez-Hoy, is that okay with you? Okay, and then we're going to try to keep this, we're going to try to have our next topic. We want to try to have it come up at four forty-five at the latest because I want to make sure that Ms. Principal McCormick Jordan has, Jordan McCormick has time to present. All right, go ahead, Dr. Delgado.
Hi there. I just wanted to kind of clarify a couple of things. First of all, I absolutely agree with the comments. The, the piece that I can bring to this effort and that I have brought to the effort so far is that of a person who has spent twenty years in education, having built schools from the ground up. So my expertise is not in being an African-American, obviously. My expertise is around school design. And I actually have a background in research as well. So I heartily agree with the idea that when the hiring happens, if the person leading the school should be an African-American person. In the meantime, what I do is I facilitate. I take the comments from the community. I organize them toward a school design and that's what, what I believe I can help the district to accomplish. And I appreciate the, the folks showing up and giving their comments tonight. So that's it. Thank you.
And then just real quick, trustee Smith Folds too. Yeah, Dr. Delgado is not running the school. She's just really pushing the paper for us. And so as she stated, giving us a timeline of when we need to do things. As far as the committee, as I mentioned earlier, yeah, we wanted the committee to present tonight. But again, that was a mistake because I did not schedule the meeting because I was double booked and when it came time to it, we just couldn't organize. And so there is no new information being presented tonight. The process is that when we had the committee meeting, people signed up to do certain things. We were trying to get people to do the work as the committee. So there's nothing new presented tonight. The only thing, and this is just an update. And so there are some families that do not want the Afrocentric school, and so that was brought up tonight as a good point. And so this is why we're here to discuss it. Nothing is set in stone. And then as Ms. Shields mentioned, there was a community meeting a while ago, and I think that community meeting was talking about the three options as well, charter, district and, or district affiliate. And so there, those were separate meetings. And then what we're doing is we're trying to gather the research so the planning committee can talk about it. And then as we said, take it back to the community. So everything that you all have seen tonight was from the community. It was not from me. It was not from Ms. Delgado. Those were the community's words around the school. And so this is why we are here. And as I stated, we do have to talk with Dr. Hurst as well to see what direction we want to go in as a school district.
Thank you, Mr. McGee. Sorry if you heard the phone, of course, it's my mom every single time. So if you guys would please keep the academic committee in the loop, we would love for you to come back. Like this is not, this is just the first conversation when it comes around academics and schooling and the teaching and learning that's happening with all of our students with a clear focus on our black and African-American students. So Mr. McGee, please, there's an open invitation. Please come back to the academic committee. The further you get in the process, we would like to have those updates so we also can have a conversation around the community with it. I do see Ms. Preston's hand, but Mr. McGee, I am going to take your complete, your complete description of Ms. Preston, and I'm going to let her go right before I go. So Mr. trustee Gonzalez-Hoy, if you would do your questions and comments, then we're going to jump to Ms. Preston. And then we're going to jump to me and then we'll jump to Ms. Jordan McCormick. Go ahead, trustee Gonzalez-Hoy.
Sure. Thank you, trustee Smith Folds. Thank you, Mr. McGee, and thank you, Dr. Delgado. Good to see you again for the presentation and update. You know, I feel like we are really rushed and this is something that I definitely want to have a larger conversation about. And I feel like it's my fault because I'm speaking first at the reclassification ceremony and I rushed us today. So I feel like I put us all to fail tonight, to be honest, because I do wish it was like our only item and we were discussing it for two hours, right? So actually, my recommendation, Chair Smith Folds, is that we put it on, we do a special meeting for the academic because we just love our special meetings. We do a special meeting for the academic subcommittee where we can discuss more details because I need to hear more research and data and information as of the need and the why. And I personally can tell you all that I like the idea because of what I've seen across the nation. But I haven't really heard what our community is saying except for what I heard tonight. And I will go back and read the attachments that, that were attached to the presentation. And but I would like to just hear more because I do feel like I'm missing quite a bit of information, obviously, in order for me to give you fair and, and real feedback, Director McGee, on, on direction, right? I don't feel like I have enough information. And, and I do have obviously a lot of questions and we have five minutes until the next item. So I will end there to give you also grace that you didn't have enough time for today. So that would be my recommendation, Chair Smith Folds. Maybe also give them enough time to also be able to do this, right? So if Director McGee thinks that's later in June, I'm okay with that or, or early in July. Because I also don't really understand the timeline. So, so you know, I also don't know how that affects, but we'd love to hear your thoughts, Chair Smith Folds.
Mr. McGee, when is the next meeting centered around this work?
That's what we're going to schedule. So it'll be with the committee and then the community.
Do you forecast a community and committee meeting happening before July?
Yes. And so, and I think that's what like trustee Gonzalez-Hoy mentioned is the timeline, because the timeline to me is off as well, because ideally we would want a founding principal involved in this work who would be able to take more charge and really meeting with the community. We were looking to have our certificated coordinator on board to help us with this work as well. So what Mr. Gonzalez-Hoy is mentioning is absolutely correct. And so again, we were looking at an August twenty twenty-two opening, again, barring direction from the board and the superintendent. But that's still, that wouldn't give us a great opportunity to have a founding principle. So the board may say, hey, yeah, just like the other schools, maybe we look at twenty-two, twenty-three opening. And then that gives us enough opportunity because as I've met with Dr. Hurst and, and his just discussion on academics goes to what Ms. Smith stated, right, about how do we educate the masses of black children at all the school site? All the school sites. So I mean, that's also a very great comment. So I'll wrap that up there with, with that trustee Gonzalez-Hoy. But yeah, makes total sense.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez-Hoy. Thank you, Mr. McGee. Let's go to Ms. Preston real quick and then we'll jump back to me. We've got three minutes.
All right, Ms. Preston, I'm going to put you on the clock though.
Um, I just wanted to say that I have been in touch on my own with Linda Delgado and we had talked about the research. She does have a folder of research and I had done some other independent research. There are three Afrocentric schools in Chicago doing very well, the Betty Shabazz Schools. And I was in the process of gathering data from them. I also had put in a call to Reverend Alexander because with, with the work that his parents have done and he just hasn't gotten back to me yet. But I've been in the meetings with several of the committee members and their comments are registered on those documents that two of the people that spoke today, their comments are registered on those documents of how they felt and what are some of the things they would like to see in an Afrocentric school. Just remember that Oasis is leading the work and our goal is not only to have an Afrocentric school for those Afro-American children that want a school of their own. But remember, other races do their schools on Saturday and their stoops, their children go to Chinese school, Japanese school, Indian school on Saturday, all through elementary school to learn their language, their culture and whatever the schools don't provide. This is an opportunity for us to take advantage of what the district is offering us. And I think it's something that's, that's wonderful and good. And we could be the model of this curriculum and instruction being infused into other schools with the regular West Coast, possibly even the high school district instruction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Preston.
Thank you so much, Ms. Preston. So Director McGee, what I would think is that taking a listen to what we heard from the community and the public comments, listening to what you have said, listening to what trustee Gonzalez-Hoy has said, I think that it's all coming together. It's just sewing it up, like making it kind of fit together in such a way that it's, the rollout is smooth and then it has all of that community behind it and community input. So again, I think open conversation, open, open invitation to come back to the academic committee, trustee Gonzalez-Hoy. I like the idea of making this our only item, our only topic. And I think I like the idea of doing it like a town hall like we've done before to where we have panelists and we just have those conversations like we have. I would love to invite Ms. Shields, Ms. Smith, Ms. Mr. McGee, your committee that is working on this. And then just have a conversation to where we can flush some of those ideas and thoughts out and we can sit and have real dialogue. I think that the best products come from when we're just talking with each other and we're just having real conversation. And of course, we'll invite the superintendent to that and then we will just start the conversation. Look, it is four forty-five. We are doing well. Okay. So that's our direction. Director McGee, thank you again. Dr. Delgado, thank you very much. And then so we will look forward to having a special meeting. We'll talk offline to figure out when that meeting is. And good afternoon. Ms. Jordan McCormick, are you a doctor too?
No.
Okay, because I really want to make sure that people are a doctor. I need you to put it in there, like, because if I was a doctor, it would be like right across my face all the time. So, okay.
One day, one day.
I would say just we can make a proclamation that anyone who's at the academic committee is a honorary doctor.
Becomes a doctor. I like that. I don't know if it would float, but I'll take it. So Principal Jordan, Jordan McCormick, it is your turn. You are up.
Thank you. Can you guys elevate Dr. Sarah Breed? And please forgive me, let me say hi first. Good afternoon, trustee Gonzalez-Hoy. Good afternoon, trustee Smith Folds. Good afternoon, Dr. Delgado. I began this work with her too, so I feel really good seeing her. Good afternoon, Superintendent Dr. Hurst, and good afternoon, Mr. Aurelio. Thank you guys for having me and hi and good afternoon, Dr. Breed, who's been my newest and greatest contact. Reuben, do you have my PowerPoint presentation?
I do. Do you want me to share it?
Yeah, that would be awesome if you could let me in. And I'll try to go quick. What I do want to say in committing this, you guys may have seen this before. I do have a firm belief in being really consistent until you build your audience. So I'll go quick with the things that you've seen before. And then there are some things that we've added so that we can take questions. So here's our update. You guys know me. I've been a parent in the district. I just set this on a meeting since two thousand and two. My oldest son finished in ECHS. I am the founding principal, been a teacher for a really long time. And I've had the pleasure of teaching K-12 in my career. So initially I broke down some other stuff. But I have been a principal from pre-K to alt ed as of today. We can go to the next slide. So this virtual academy, this is so exciting. This actually started with Dr. Delgado when I went to Vista in twenty eighteen. So it is really nice to see her here. She's been an amazing thought partner with me. The whole point of this is that we discovered something. My first year in Vista, when we were full, we had a large group of kids that needed the type of schooling we offer at Vista, but we had no place to put them. And so we started exploring virtual academies and what they are is their choice schoolings. There's an appropriate balance between synchronous and asynchronous instruction. So that's, you know, time in front of your computer or your tablet and time off. But there's a huge focus on socio-emotional wellness and learning, which I think connects us back to choice. Next slide. So how did we get here? So as I said before, I started looking at virtual schools in twenty eighteen. I'm a member of an organization called CCIS. It's the California Consortium of Independent Studies. And through CCIS is where I met my first virtual principals in twenty eighteen. We also, Superintendent Duffy also sent us to Sojourner Truth in the Electric Learning Center, Electronic Learning Center in Oakland in October of twenty eighteen. On my own, I visited Mountain House High School in Lammersville Unified School District. I've been looking into Stanford Online, like my program shift was really huge. And I forgot to add something to this slide. We were also sent to go look at some of the Met schools in Sacramento. And from that visit with the Met Sacramento School through deeper learning under Superintendent Duffy, part of our program planning came out of that. So what ended up happening along the way is my primitive thoughts around virtual schooling have basically shifted. Initially, I thought we needed like some kind of tech program, some kind of learning platform. And that's where I discovered Edgenuity. I visited Mountain House and they were using it there. But as I started researching like the top online high schools and what makes them successful is there's an amazing balance between teachers and how they connect with teachers and how kids have access to curriculum with some learning management or some learning management platforms at the same time. So our, our, our thinking around the virtual school in the last three years and due to the pandemic has completely shifted. Next slide, please. So what we found is when we shut down over COVID is those kids that I was talking about, those ones that would benefit from this type of schooling is we saw an increase in attendance. And the kids that were kids who were doing really well in our, our distance learning platform. So these are the students and the families that we are marketing to. And what I want to say about this type of schooling is again, it's a lot of choice involved. And the idea is that you're able to create differentiated learning experiences that are very personalized. But I'll get into more, more details in a bit. Next slide, please. So in February, it was, it was So in February, it was, it was announced, we're like, okay, we're going to do this. And you guys have been with me through this whole journey. So I really feel like this is the point where like the, what is the cart is before the horse. So we're opening this up all K-12. There was open enrollment in February, but families did as I suspected they would. They, they want, you know, you want to know more information and people have been very patient with us in this process. And as people reach out to me, I've just been letting them know, I know we're going backwards, but it's all going to be okay. At this point, we have identified the principal here. We've identified office staff and we, we have some hires. We've been working on our instruction and our curriculum. What I don't have is a location yet or a hub, which that'll come up in my slides later as well. Next slide, please. So here's our key elements, and this is always where I get super excited talking about this because personalized, personalized learning is huge. And being able to do that for kids in a virtual setting is something that has been, when, when, when my, my current site in Vista High School, when we both online. We, we looked at some amazing opportunities that we were able to grab on to. And part of that is the flexibility, using flipped classroom models, recording things and making them accessible to kids. But I think the biggest thing in this virtual setting is that this is a collaborative school. Where we're going to have a relationship with the staff, the students, community members, parents or guardians. This type of choice schooling, you are choosing to be very proactive and a part of your student's life by far when it comes to their education. We do plan on having social activities enrichment and community-based activities. But I think the biggest thing that I want to stress is that through this type of schooling, when we can add personalization. You create happy students, staffs and families. And that's really huge. I know a lot of people are going to want me to say, what is the day going to look like? And that's always a hard question because what does the day need to look like for you? Hold on one second. My husband's knocking on the door, you guys. My son has a baseball game too, forgive me. Sorry, I'm back. Okay. And so based on all this, my own personal educational philosophy, I'm a huge fan of PBIS. Positive Behavior Intervention Systems and Supports. I also am looking at multi-tiered systems of support. This huge PBS is just a part of it. Being able to, I'm a restorative practitioner, but really being able to build school for kids and for their needs has always been a personal passion of mine. I do, I, we do believe in this setting that we were, we're going to be having culturally responsive and culturally relevant pedagogy. Part of the, the vision for the high school is to build an internship type pathway as well as a community health partnership pathway. There's a big focus on social emotional learning and that goes back to students' choice. If you're choosing this type of school, then there's something that might not be working for you in the traditional setting or something you may be looking to gain out of this setting. It's huge for us to have family and community engagement. The more importantly, more important, high expectations and standards-based education is our goal. Next slide, please. So this is just a little more around tiered supports. And I really wanted to show this because I want families and all people who buy into this school to understand that everything in schools breaks down. And like your universal piece and then kids that need a little more support and then some that need a little more support than that. This is all going to be the same in the virtual setting. I think the biggest thing is that once we get to know your kids and we get to figure out what they need. And so this is again tied into our educational philosophy. Next slide, please. So I do want to, and I'm going to continue to do this. I think a lot of people have an interesting view of virtual school based on what has happened in the world. Distance learning was a response to virtual schooling. So distance learning has kind of come out of this pandemic, but virtual schooling has been around for a really long time. There's just a lot of different unique models when it comes to virtual schooling. And what we did with distance learning, which by the way, I think has been amazing. I have family in different school districts and I love that we, we negotiated time and we did a lot of things to make it user-friendly for kids. But distance learning is a unique model. What that was created to put traditional school online. So virtual schooling and this distance learning, they're same, same, but different only because of the modality. Virtual schools can offer more autonomy and choice. Virtual schools provide a balance of academic and social emotional health and wellness. And students will be able to attend virtual schools, but also remain in activities at their homeschool. So if you're a student athlete and your academics sit better for you in a virtual setting, but you live in the Deans area, if you are eligible, you will still be able to play. We will have an MOU set up. You'll still be able to participate. But I think the biggest thing is to try to find the balance of synchronous and that's live in the tablet and asynchronous learning. And that's where the personalized approach comes. Next slide, please. So in our instructional program, so as I said, this is a K-12 school. But the original design started seven to 12 and in that we created three kind of pathways. One was college and career readiness where kids could set out and do their own concurrent enrollment. And they could get guidance from us with our, with our counselors. Our other one was internship based and that was what we learned when we went to go visit the Met Sacramento School. Which was very interesting because what the Met School did was they had a truncated day using an independent studies platform. But in between that, kids were able to do internships and we really, really enjoyed that. We were able to visit some kids at some amazing, different random internships, some that the kids found for themselves. Some that they were assigned to. And then our final one was community health support. And then that, that is more of like a therapeutic base, but also tied into kind of like a social justice platform. Next slide, please. And this is just, all of these broke down with just a little more depth. I know we are short on time, so I won't go into too much. But the idea is that through these three pathways, we would build an individualized program for the student that would make them, what that would work for them. So I'll just use an example of a student that we had at my current site who not only was a pro-am racer. He loved cars and on his own, he found this amazing internship with Ford. And so when he finished at Vista High School, he was able to walk into this job making over 30 hour, $30 an hour. But part of what happened with him was he had the flexibility to build school around his schedule so that he could participate in this internship. And we're looking to create more individualized pathways for kids that way. So that it's not saying you have to do this internship. If I'm a student and let's say that I'm really into plants and I want to go volunteer or intern at a nursery. We would love to help support kids and make that happen for them. And under community health support, it's more of a therapeutic support model using like group access or volunteering or doing one-on-one support. Those things will be monitored by our onsite therapists and college and career is as simple as it sounds. This would be giving kids an opportunity to kind of build the same model that we have at Vista High School where you can do concurrent enrollment. But take any courses and these courses are monitored by our school counselor. Next slide, please. So I'll go really quick on this, but I just want to say that all these ideas have been founded on the asset model of difference. And what I want to say is we embrace difference, we celebrate difference, we understand that kids are really unique. We understand that traditional schools don't work for everybody and we understand if given the opportunity. We can build a climate that's differentiated with a universal design for learning that can make kids really happy. But help them find their place in schools. Next slide, please. So for case, case six virtual learning, we're going to use Common Core Curriculum built around project-based learning. Students will be able to advance their studies and create different ways to demonstrate their proficiency at their learning levels. And we've been thinking about this because we did open K-12. We don't know if we're going to have kids at all grade levels. So part of our design is going to have to come as kids begin to enroll and we see where they are. In the case six setting, they'll have an opportunity to expand their learning with their supervising teacher and their learning coaches. And their learning coaches are those of us on staff as well as their parents. And so once we have kids enrolled, we'll build other opportunities for kids to drop in on different classes that'll be happening throughout the week. What we do love and learned that online tools can allow for an unprecedented level of personalization. And that goes to like your least amount of school. If I'm a student that maybe has brain health issues and I need something self-paced. We have a lot of opportunities here and so we're super excited about that. And again, meaningful feedback to support our students and their work, allowing them the autonomy they need to balance their academic success in the virtual setting. And that's really huge. What we've learned is that everybody has a story. So if you're choosing this type of schooling, there's probably generally some story behind it. Next slide, please. So for seven to 12, and actually I should say nine to 12 because seven and eight don't take A to G courses. We will have A to G courses. We will have some virtual curriculum platforms. We don't plan to solely sit this school on a platform. I do know that that is what some people are doing right now for virtual schooling and that does qualify, but that is not what we want to do. We're a huge fan of hybrid learning experiences. So we want to have a mix of platform, live instruction as well as asynchronous assignments. We want, we were, we want to have academic courses onsite or concurrent enrollment. I already mentioned cultural responsive pedagogy. We also want to do social activities to promote social interaction and positive school climate. So our biggest goal is like to keep school academically in a virtual setting to keep it safe. But actually give kids opportunities to be in what I'm calling structured spontaneity, very planned, very thought out as social activities. We do also plan to offer mental health supports, social emotional learning courses and other electives onsite or in the virtual setting. Next slide, please. And so again, this is a huge focus on social emotional wellness and learning opportunities. We, we want to focus on self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills and responsible, this, this responsible decision-making, excuse me. Which is huge because choice, this is a choice school. So if you're choosing us, you're choosing a lot of these things that we're buying into. Next slide, please. So right now, this is where I get to get excited and I am flying through this for questions. I'm proud of you. I like my pace. We have a principal, we have an amazing office manager. And we have found first, before I say this, I want to thank human resources for their work. We had a lot of interested candidates and we were able to go through, I just want to say I met, this was so hard to narrow this down. We met some of the most amazing educators in our school district in the process of narrowing it down to three people. And I just want to say that now, like this, this was, it was tiring, it was hard. But it made me feel so good inside that there are just so many awesome teachers that were out there. And more importantly, so many awesome teachers out there willing to give this idea and this unknown thing a chance. So I'm just super proud. So we did find our elementary founding teacher. We did find our secondary founding teacher and we found our RSP teacher. And we currently have a school psychologist assigned to us. So I don't mind saying he, she is. Her name is Laika Sadaka and thank you Laika. She helped with all the interviews. We have not met as a staff yet. So before I announce who they are and put their business in the street. We will be meeting this week and we'll be planning for our second virtual school informational. Will be less of me talking and more of us like boom, here we are. This is the gifts that we're bringing and this is what we're looking forward to doing. All right, next slide. So for enrollment, and this has been like a challenge. I think when this was announced in February, I think due to the pandemic, there was a, a belief that people would just kind of run to this. But I, that's not what, and so I just want to say, and I'm going to still keep saying this. We are not a response to COVID. We are, okay, go back one more, thank you. We are not a COVID response. We have pitched this idea for three years. And I think just due to COVID, it makes more sense to people. What we do not have right now is our CDS code. It has been applied for. And we don't know where our actual, like our location to manage materials is going to be. And so as soon as we get our CDS code and we know where our hub is going to be, we will be able to actually start the enrollment process. But for now, if you are interested in enrolling in the virtual school, this is my email. And my cell phone number is 510-422-8782. And I think my last side slide says questions. There we go. Any questions?
Thank you so very much from one hyphenated married woman to another. I really, really appreciate it. I told my husband, when we are married for 50 years, I'll take off my maiden name. I just don't want to do the paperwork. So we're going to have to marry 50 years before I go do the paperwork. So Mr. Ray Leo, do we have any public comment? Everyone, you can raise your hand now for this item.
Let's see one hand, but let's give it a second in case we have any more hands raised.
I think Kim Chamberlain just put something in the chat that the virtual school is built in online registration. So I think that is, I think we might be up and running. I was under the impression we needed our CDS code.
Well, we can build in power school.
Okay.
Yeah. So that means, and Kim did raise her hand, so we should.
So let's do this. Let's run through the public comment. And if you, if, when we're talking, when the trustees are talking, if you still have something to say, pop your hand up. And if we still have time, we'll grab it then. So let's do Ms. Chamberlain and then Demetrio questions, comment kind of mixed together. And then everyone, we have about 25 minutes. So we want to make sure that we give, get out in plenty of time. Ms. Jordan McCormick, please open invitation. We need you to come back when you have more information, when the enrollment is started. So we can go to a deeper dive. Okay. We are ready for public comment, Mr. Ray Leo.
Yes, Kim Chamberlain, you can unmute.
Hi, yes. Um, one, I'm glad this school is starting up and getting going. From various aspects, looking at other districts around the state. It is a much needed resource for West Contra Costa Unified. We do have other districts surrounding us and I think it's the only thing that's keeping us from keeping the charter kids from going to charter. And we really need those kids coming back to us. And I think the online virtual school will help. Advertisement, where is it going? How's it going out there? Haven't seen very much of it. I have had quite a few families asking me through the various groups I'm in. I do think we need to advertise this much more. And I'm interested in some other areas and yes, Ms. Jordan McCormick. It is built definitely in, and it has been since January with the hope that we would get going and you have one kid in there right now. So, and it's a kinder. So I do believe families are looking forward to this in the future. Thank you very much for moving forward.
Can I answer that? Is that, is that appropriate for me to say what our plan is? And so we were waiting. Thank you, Ms. Chamberlain for calling in and thank you for your kind words. We've been waiting to hire people because I've been a one-man show. And so now that we have an office manager and I, and I've, I've known who our school psychologist has been this whole time. But we've kept a lot of things under wraps. After we meet as a staff and we kind of get each other together, our goal is to start creating a social media presence for this school. We don't have a name. We're still called the Richmond Virtual Academy. But our goal is to kind of do some introductions of ourselves so that parents and families kind of see a little bit more of who they're buying into. But I do think if we knew the location, because a lot of the questions that I'm getting from families are, well, where are materials pickups going to be and how am I going to get this? And so some of those things are a little out of my control. There was a rumor that I may have had a location, which I don't know if I should say, but I, if I could ask, is that okay, Ruben?
Well, I know that's a discussion that we are going to be having at cabinet, I believe this week, Dr. Hurst, we should add it to our list. Around location, I, we, we started to just, I mean, it's not necessarily a rumor, but we have looked at this, the location that's being vacated by West County Mandarin. In their move as a possibility as a sort of home base for the virtual school. But we don't, we, we haven't committed fully yet to that. So we're going to have that discussion at cabinet to figure out where, what makes the most sense.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think that that would help us at this point. I think that there is a, there's something about the security of people knowing, even if you don't visit the place, but you kind of need to know the place. And I think it would really be helpful because then that way, if you need to reach our amazing office manager, you know who or to call. And those are just a few of the missing pieces. So I think after we have a little more information, we do plan on going on a social media blitz. That should be really fun.
Thank you. So let's go, we have one more hand raised. Let's go to Siletta Hunter. Ms. Hunter, you can unmute.
Hello. Hi, everybody. Hello, principal. I can't, I, I never call you principal, but you're a principal here. I just have two questions as a black parent. The first one is, I remember learning in my program. We did some studies about schools in Africa, schools in Iceland, schools in Cuba. And one thing that I heard about the schools in Africa is that they were actually doing this, starting up virtual learning for lower income students. And that that was going to be the model for education in countries like Ghana going forward. And so my first question is, was, and I may have missed it. Was there research done to look at how virtual learning has affected different student groups? And then also my second question would be, is there anything coming from the past budget in order to fund the school's endeavor? And I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hunter. That, thank you. Thank you. Um, thank you, Ms. Hunter. That, thank you for your questions too. So yes, we have done a lot of homework on virtual learning. I've been studying the top online high schools and surprisingly enough, and, and this shows in the data from Vista as well. Black kids do very well in this type of setting. I'm, I cannot answer your question in terms of low socioeconomics. I do want to say that the staff that we've hired, we understand that the iteration of our school for the 2021, 22 school year is probably going to change. As we build steam and as we are able to show how successful we can be. So. And no, there is no money coming from the past budget. I don't even have a budget, to be quite honest. I heard the way Mr. McGee presented his school, I'm, I'm actually going backwards. So I don't know anything about money and, and we're not worried about that right now. We're just, oh, go ahead.
Well, I, and I saw, I grabbed Dr. World because he's in the audience. He, if you, if we need a, he can speak to what's the sort of the seed money for the startup of this school, because there is.
So I'll go real quick. We purposefully created the virtual school outside of our allocations so that it's not taking away a dollar from any of our other programs. We will be setting aside as a committed reserve funds for not only this program, but the trades. And the VAPA as we're in planning for next year. So budget wise, we don't need to take from another budget to get it started. Once we have the enrollment in, it'll become self-sustaining like every other school. It'll get its normal allocation based on enrollment, but we did not want that to be a barrier for access to start off. So we're using one-time carryover dollars that are going to be dedicated to this program for this year coming up.
Thank you, Dr. Wolf. Thank you, Principal Jordan McCormick. Mr. Ray Leo, I don't see any more hands. So we're going to jump to trustee Gonzalez Hoy for your questions, comment mixed together. And then we'll go to our future agenda or academic next meeting, future agenda items. Okay, trustee Gonzalez, so you're up.
Thank you, trustee Smithfold. So I have, and actually first of all, thank you. Ms. Jordan McCormick and Dr. Breed for being here and great presentation. I do have a lot of questions for time. I am probably going to email some of the academic questions and if you wouldn't mind. Me putting them in the Friday letter, Mr. Ray Leo, that'd be great. And all, those are around the curriculum specifications, like the virtual curriculum, some of the social emotional curriculum that was discussed, things like that. So some of the other questions, I'm going to start with a concern and then I'm going to move to some positives. My concern is that there is, I'm hearing a lot from community members that are really interested in the school. I think as a response for a lack of space for. A virtual option in their school because of COVID, right? So exactly what you said, Sharon McCormick, that is the opposite of what you want. I'm hearing there's going to be a lot of people signing up because of that. So. I worry and I hope this is not the case. Well, I hope not, that. We're going to see actually when the enrollment opens, whatever that looks like, we're going to see a large number of people who are really interested. And it's going to be a lot bigger than two or three teachers. Which is a good problem to have. But I think that there's kind of had to be a lot of communication around the actual. Purpose of the school. And I think that we're going to have to navigate offering the space if, if people want the space because they're worried about COVID. Even if that's not the case of what the mission of the school is. So I think that's just something we're going to have to navigate. I don't know, Sharon McCormick, do you have any thoughts on that?
I do, I do. Because let me just say this, it's not that it's not our mission. We were thinking about this prior to COVID. And so that's what I want people to feel safe about. If you don't feel comfortable, if you are a parent and a student and you don't feel comfortable going back to regular school and you're interested in the. Virtual school, like your reasons for choosing us aren't, they don't really have anything to do with me. What really, we just want people to understand is we've been looking at virtual schools for over almost three years now. And looking at them in depthly and looking at them from the base camp where you're using like an Edmentum or an Edge Newity. And going all the way up to, and I keep sharing this with people in the Bay Area. We have one of the top online high schools very close to us in the Stanford Online High School over in Palo Alto. And parents play, they pay close to 30 grand a year for their kids to get that. I'm just one of those people that I believe I can build that. Like I just, no one's going to tell me I can't, like why not? And so that's really what my goal is and what my joy is. Now, why people choose this, that you, people can check their own boxes. This is not, this, this is no mission to separate distance learning and virtual schooling. This is a mission to educate people that if you're expecting virtual schooling to look like just what distance learning is looking like right now. That's not going to necessarily be the case. There are some aspects that will look the same, but it's not going to look like what people kind of understand. Which is our current, I'll just speak to the middle school schedule. My son's in front of a. You know, a technological piece from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. And philosophically, what I understand about virtual schools, that's just kind of a lot. Right? And so there's the same, same, but different that I want people to understand. There will be some time in front of tablets, but it won't look the same like it looks right now because. We did a great job taking traditional school and putting it in a virtual setting. But that doesn't mean that it's a virtual school. It just means that we took traditional schools and we put them in virtual settings. So that's all I want to differentiate. Why you choose us is, I, my goal was just, if you choose this, my goal is to make you happy, you and your kids, and they learn a lot.
And that I do, I think it's important to share too, that this isn't a short-term temporary COVID solution for families. So if it's, I'm just waiting for my kid to be vaccinated in the fall. This isn't really that space. You know, we do want the commitment from our families. Now you might've learned during this COVID time that this modality works great for your kid and that's why you're seeking out this virtual option. So. To me, that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you both for that. I do think that, and maybe this is for parking lot for Dr. Hurst later's. How do we navigate the people who are looking for the, the short term? Right? I'm, I'm really concerned about that, that they're going to have a lot of people sign up and then. Disenroll and go back to their regular school a year later, right? And what's going to do that? What is the impact to the program, right? So just something to think about, put in the, to put in the parking lot. But, but I, I mean, I agree with what you said. So the next question is. Sharon McCormick, do you envision like there's going to be changes to some of the labor contracts like class sizes or, or things like that? That we should probably be having those conversations right now? And are those conversations happening?
I have learned my lesson in terms of like, I, that, I, that's above my pay grade. What I can tell you is when we designed this school, and I think some people have kind of learned this. Virtual schools sit in the California Consortium of Independent Studies. Just because you use independent studies format and platform for schooling, it doesn't mean that it's solely what people think. Independent studies is, which I hear people say all the time, traditional paper and packet, like those of us in the IS world, we're just like cringy, like. And so what I, yeah, just. In looking at that, like it is an independent study school in its format, but it's not. If there's the same, a lot of same, same, but different in that, I guess it's fair to say.
And right now we're functioning as if it would fit under the current contract.
Yeah. And so my goal is, if the service model is really going to be effective and what we're offering in virtual schooling. There's a lot of interplay that the students have. And one of the things that makes Vista High School so. We're tiny, but we're really successful is there's an all hands on deck, like everybody, no one says this is not my job. And so as you balance kids and you balance what they're doing, if I get to have any say. I would like the virtual school teachers to be considered the same as my teachers at Vista and carrying an independent studies load. Because that way they could do the personalized learning in a much more effective manner. And we could do the same data tracking and the same type of cost care that we do. Like if you look at our cohort graduation data, we've gone up over the last few years significantly. And that's, that's the, but that's not lost in the sauce. And so if I have a say, which you asked me, so I'm. Which I tell, I think it would be, it would be important for us to look at these. Teachers in this new setting, the same way we would look at other independent studies teachers under the UTEA contract. It's only my opinion.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that. I used to be able to give that excuse, by the way, now anymore. So.
I did, you caught me struggling, but.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate your, your honest, your honest response.
My heart's all like, wait.
So I, because of time, I have two last questions because I want to make sure that trustee Smithfold is able to answer questions too. Are you doing any type of collaboration with middle college? Since they offer, especially this year and next year, they're offering a lot of their schooling online. Has there been any collaboration between you?
No, because they, so we share a counselor. So a lot of the collaboration we do is more in terms of student needs. So. I look at Vista and our joke is like, we just call this like a middle version of middle college. And so currently right now for people who want more, because I think what people don't know is that Vista has classes. So we do math from Algebra I all the way up to pre-cow and we're welcoming. A new staff member to be able to offer calculus A and B. We do the sciences. We also have social emotional learning. We have a couple art classes in Spanish as well. So I do plan to, when it's necessary, do some cross pollination within settings that I'm very comfortable with. But if it works out to cross pollinate with middle college, I would love to. I'm also kind of toying around. There's a wonderful program and I've had the pleasure, Dr. Breed and I have known each other. For I'd say about 10 years now, Dr. Breed, is that about right? But through some work with her in a former district, I was able to use and pilot an amazing program. And that founder has a new program that would kind of answer a lot of the things that we promised. And I'm, I'm still just currently looking at it. So I hope the next time I see you guys, I'll be able to talk more about the, not learning management systems. That's not what it is. But you guys realize when this was spoken into the world, we said that we were going to do a lot of things. And we're a tiny staff, but we're talking about CTE options and college and career planning. And if this program does what I think it can do, I would love to talk about introducing it and having some piloting, which would take away. So I'm saying all that to say, we wouldn't need middle college necessarily with this. And we could balance some of this with some of the cute classes that we offer at Vista. And for the record, because the Vista staff has been totally a part of this online planning. They looked at the summit platform prior to me being the principal and I'm sorry, oh, Dr. Delgado is still here. So she, she was actually leading that work years ago. They're okay with the cross pollination, like this is a really good idea. And what we think would be great is it would give us an opportunity to do some hybrid learning. And this again would be based on student need. So what I do want to say to you guys is there are a lot of kids that have some amazing stories in this district. And if we don't get to them, then it's hard to educate them. So our goal is to get to those stories and build the best programs for these, for our kids. And they, like I said, same, same, but different. But if we do allow our teachers to small, to carry a smaller but intentional case load. I think that we're going to get to like the, the good stuff in the middle with all of our kids, you know?
Thank you for that. And my last question, and, and you don't have to go into too much detail is. Did I freeze?
You're, we can hear you, go ahead.
You came back, yeah.
You were really slow for a second.
I'm sorry, I'm here. I'm going to turn off my video so I can ask my last question. Sorry. What do you need from us?
Ooh. Oh my gosh, that question just like made me so, I like got all happy. Um, you guys have been so, wait, first of all, let me just say thank you to everyone on this call who like really has made this happen. And I, again, I just love that Dr. Delgado is here because she literally has been with me from 2018 until now. So I think I just need your continued support and your belief. And I do, I would like to host another virtual school informational and it would be nice to have one of you guys there as board members. Just to kind of, I think one of the things I've learned in this process is everything that you're starting needs some sort of legitimacy. And so in the last time I was there, thank you, trustee Gonzalez, while you paid me a really amazing compliment and I appreciate that. But I just think just showing the continued support, because a lot of families are nervous and they're scared right now. And I think the more that we're doing a united, consistent front and letting people know, because here's the thing. Even if you only choose us for a semester, the thing about choice is real. And I'm okay with that. They might choose us and then fall in love with us. It happens, like it can go anyway. So I don't want to deter anyone. If you are afraid to go back to in-person learning and this is something you want to try, we want to try it with you. We're just really here to kind of do something that we know can work. And again, I, I just, I need you guys just to continue giving me a space to cheer for this and to continue to support me. And support us, not even just me.
Thank you so much and thank you for your work. That's it for me, trustee Smithfold.
Okay, um, I'm going to ask everybody, give me 10 minutes, just it's, we'll end at 5:40 instead of 5:30. So just give me 10 minutes. Principal McCormick, Jordan McCormick, I'm going to go fast. So first of all, I don't want the district to use your beautiful new school as a crutch. Because they're not offering the different access points to education that they need to be doing. You are not a COVID option. You are a commitment to this program. So I don't want to set you up for failure and then turn around and that ends up setting up the other schools for failure because you have kids coming in and out. You know how it is when you have your class set and then you get five new kids in the middle of the thing, you're like, oh, come on, I already had like a group. So I don't want that for you because I think that that will end up harming instead of helping grow your program. I want there to be a, we have our traditional schools. We have something that we need in the middle. We have a middle college, we have a Vista and we have a virtual program. The district has to do its job to have that second point of access for education, which is for those parents and those students who do need a COVID response. That's not you. You are different. You are different and you're set apart for a reason because your season is going to be a long one. This season here is very short because it's a COVID response. We are all hoping that this is a short. A short time, a short stop off. So I want the district to do its job to implement something here that doesn't affect you over here. Because you are a different thing. And I want to say that I want to be at the ribbon cutting of the Barack Obama K-12 virtual school. I will continue to put that name out there because I think it's great. We have a Michelle, we need a Barack. So what's the, right now, what do you think the capacity could be with the, with the staff that you have?
Oh, wow. Well, okay, so that would go more into contractual talks. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip and dip on that one, but what I will say is. There have been people who have reached out to people pay grades above me and have made a very solid point that they're concerned that we may need more people. And what I will say right now is Kim Chamberlain said something very telling. She was like, there's only one. What I've been saying is that this is not going to take off until there's some other pieces in place. I see, and I, I think it's going to be the opposite. I think we're going to have a slow to go in the beginning because people are going to be unclear. And they're going to be waiting to see what the district's going to do. And I totally understand that. The population that we're marketing to, once they learn what we are, if they're going to, like I said, they're going to either love us and this is going to work. And, and again, I don't want to make a list for people, but there are some kids out there that are having really bad anxiety. And they still want a kind of traditional high school experience, but not like that. We're a great fit. Maybe you've got some other health concerns that are going on. We can make things work. So. I, there's like a both and with that, and I really do appreciate that. But we're also not going to shy away because if we treat this like supervising teachers and that is in our plan with learning coaches. Kids coming and going won't really, it doesn't affect us like that. You'd be surprised. The surprise for me though is I expected my current side to be a lot more transitory, but once people find us and get there, they stay. And I think the virtual school is going to have the same effect. That's just me. But I also understand this is a really uncertain time for people. So thank you for saying that. I do think that parents need another option. And I, again, I think we're going to be slow to go.
Thank you for that. And then. You said that you have, do you have a counselor that's outside of the Vista Middle College Council? Do you have your own counselor?
Not yet, and.
That, right? You need your own, you need your own counselor. Okay.
Yes.
And you are going to be able to handle the students that have IEPs or special ed needs, correct?
Yes, yes. Oh, my goodness. I am so excited to introduce the most amazing RSP teacher. Who is willing to take on a K-12 load and knew that from the beginning. So this is so incredibly exciting, but I want to say that the, the most interest in this design years ago. Did come out of parents who had students with special needs. So we are, we're prepared, we're ready. We have an amazing school psychologist, an amazing RSP teacher. And we are building an ISP model. So the goal isn't that you end up on a RSP teacher's caseload and that's all you're doing. We are going to be a fully inclusive school that again, uses independent studies as our primary vehicle. We are gonna be a fully inclusive school that again uses independent studies as our primary vehicle. Independent studies is not paper packet, everybody. It's a facilitative side by side approach to learning where the learner is in charge.
Perfect. And then you're, when you're talking about enrollment, Ms. Chamberlain just said it's open in Power School. You also gave your email address for people to talk to you about the enrollment. You're going to have another virtual school. Informational night. So some of these things can be flushed out. Again, you are gonna come back to the academic committee when you have, okay, perfect. And then, um. I think that's it. I'm, I'm excited for the virtual school. I really am excited for the virtual school. I am not excited that the district has a very poor way of communicating with people. So they don't understand exactly what the virtual school is. Does that make sense? Like, I'm very excited for the virtual school. I just want to make sure that we are communicating well. With families and students and the community to make sure that we understand because I don't want it to get lot, kind of lost in the sauce. Um, look, I did so well. Look at five thirty. I don't even need ten minutes, Miss Gonzalez, boy, this is great. Um. Let's move on. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Dr. Sarah Breed. Um, and you're a doctor?
Yes, I am.
You're young. My mother would be so disappointed in me. You did a good job. Great.
Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to the trustees and also welcome to Dr. Hurst. Um, I am a doctor from Mills College, which is, you know, as many of you have heard is recently. I'm going to be transitioning, but I'm really proud to be working with either Jordan McCormick in partnership with Mr. Aurelio. And then looking forward to meeting with Dr. Hurst, so to really share the vision. And then also to really bolster the research based practices. I know that that's something that. Um, our community is really asking for is really basing it in the research. Loved the questions about the connections to Africa. Um, I am the mother of a biracial child. Her father is from Uganda. Um, and have a lot of experience traveling in many countries and really looking at education systems. So. We just have so much opportunity here and we have the perfect leader in either Jordan McCormick. So thanks all for being here tonight.
Oh, Dr. Breed, come on in, family. Welcome, welcome, welcome. We appreciate it.
I said, that's my friend.
Okay, so.
I've been blessed. I've had, I was an assistant principal when I met Dr. Breed and she was just as amazing. Ten years ago, as she has been very helpful and working together the last ten days, just these last ten days. She will be with us on our staff meet and greet and we will be totally ready for you guys. Whatever you need from us, we're going to be ready.
I absolutely love it. So I am just excited. Our next academic committee is on June seventh. Um, June seventh, we are talking about the special ed local plan. We're talking about the parent advisory committees. Those are the PACs and the universal guidance and bylaws. And we are talking about standardized testing. We will also have another meeting on August twenty third and on September the twenty seventh. However, Mr. McGee and Ms. Uh, the, uh, Principal Edith Jordan McCormick, you are always welcome for us to have a special meeting to talk about these very specific items. So all you have to do is drop us an email and we will make it happen. It is now five thirty three. Trustee Gonzalez Hoy, I don't have anything else to add. You're, you have your hand up. I see you. You have something to add.
We just don't want to leave. We don't want to leave. Uh, thank you, trustee Smithfolds. Uh, I did wanna. So since we were having this conversation, I wondered if we need to follow up with Dr. Hurst and maybe even agendize. The conversation around, should we be making a recommendation to the board again about, do we need to provide an option somewhere? Doesn't have to be at every school, an option somewhere uh, in response to COVID. Um, and, and, oh, I see Dr. Hurst's hands. Maybe he, he has a response to that, trustee Smithfolds. I would love to hear from him if that's okay.
You know, I would love to hear from him and you know, I think that we need to have another option. So yes, trustee Gonzalez Hoy to all of that. Dr. Hurst?
It is always good to hear from two or the trustees, but also you, um. Dr. Jordan McCormick, should I say? Looking forward to meeting you, but excellent presentation, excellent presentation. And I was jotting down a lot of questions that I had as well, and I know I'm the new uh, kid on the block. But I really appreciate the, uh, the clarity that you provide me, provided me. And I know I sent some questions to Dr. Breed. And um, I feel that all the uh, questions were addressed through the question and answer period. I, I was texting also Ruben, uh, just to share with him exactly what you said, trustee Gonzalez. That we need to have this on the agenda is right before you said that I was texting him saying, this needs to be on the agenda. We need to clarify a few things. I heard you loud and clear, um, trustee Smithfolds. Uh, since I've been here, there's been this conversation about the virtual school. And whether or not it is a COVID solution, and I'm glad you clarified that. But I think we really do need to do a really good job in communicating to the public. That this is not a COVID solution, but what I was sharing as well, we need to have a conversation. Um, and I see, uh, Mr. World, Dr. World here as well on what our COVID solution will be, if any. And um, I say if any, because I need to have a conversation um, with what's happening across uh, the. Other districts and with Lynn Mackey as well and the leadership team. But nevertheless, uh, we will be prepared to share uh, with the board on our next steps, but I agree with you wholeheartedly.
I jumped in because in the current May revision of the governor, there was very specific guidance given as it pertains to. Independent study programs and the only way you can operate an independent study program is under the current regulations. That Edith Jordan McCormick is fully aware of since she does operate under those. And so our virtual academy is operating under the same rules and auspices that Vista is. But that current language that is being proposed and chaptered would preclude. Sites from having an additional virtual option moving forward. So. It's important that we do have these conversations about what that means because the rules and regulations. The governor's made it extremely clear, the pathway for funding is school is open. And so we do need to really have thoughtful conversations. And we're very lucky that the person we have working on the virtual academy understands the rules better than pretty much anybody in the state of California right now. Since everything is moving around. So I just wanted to add that in that we were fortuitous in our thoughts.
Uh, Dr. Wool, don't go anywhere because I'd like you to read my face. Uh, we are radical in our education, so there's not really a part of me that cares what the governor says. I'm gonna need you to make a way because there is a way. You want to make a way because we, our kids need what they need. So we're gonna figure it out because, you know. We can work together to make it work. And I would agree with you that, uh, Principal McCormick and with Dr. Hurst and trustee Gonzalez, so in the whole board. Along with yourself, we can make it happen and we can be the beginning. We don't have to wait for them to agree with us. I like to go do it and then we'll apologize later, but we will make it happen. Uh, trustee Gonzalez Hoy, you lost your last thought?
Um, so yeah, the, the other thing that, and, and June seventh might be an all day thing, uh, but I definitely want. As, as Mr. Aurelio's last meeting, just to celebrate him. Um, uh, I also wanted to talk about, um, social emotional supports for the fall. Uh, I, I mentioned it at our retreat. Um, I'm really curious about social emotional curriculums that we're implementing in the fall in support of. For a full return, um, as well as resources. I know we're in negotiations, so it's kind of weird to talk about, but. At least maybe we can concentrate on the academic side. Um, and, and Mr. Aurelio and Dr. Hurst, maybe that's something we can navigate. Uh, because I'm just really interested in finding out how we're supporting the classrooms as we. Um, as we have been outside for, outside of the classroom fourteen months, right? Um, so that was just the other item that, um, I wanted to see if we could identify, maybe with that can be pushed to July, um, but. Just to see. Thank you.
Perfect. So that is it. I think that we have done excellent work today. I really appreciate everyone. I am going to call my mother. Before the reclassification ceremony because now she is texting me. So I appreciate all of you. Thank you very much for making it again to the academic committee. We cannot do it without each other. We are a group and we are a team. I can't wait to say, um. To give our appreciation to Mr. Rayley, oh, Mr. Raylio on the seventh. It's hard to say goodbye. We will be playing that in the background, Ms. Edith. You remember when that was the song, we, everybody played it. We will be playing it so hard to say goodbye and then we will all cry and then we will get to the work. I appreciate you all so much. We are adjourned. Please make sure that you show up for the reclassification ceremony. Go to the district website to find it. And have a beautiful, blessed and safe day. Bye, everyone.
Bye, guys. Thanks for having me.